We call the meeting to order, please, at 7:00 p.m. Good rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.[89.23][89.23][S02. So we're going to begin with a question that was actually in yesterday's packet. It was the one question that we did not provide an answer to, but we said we would today. And that's the question which is listed as question number 41 in the new packet. How are the academic support specialists working out that we added to the high schools this school year? So I'm going to just talk briefly to this, but Trent Thompson is here. Max Berkowitz would have been, but had childcare responsibilities and so couldn't make it. But they actually could give more testimony than I can because they're living with it every day. But just as a reminder, the academic support specialists are teachers working in what was newly created this year was an academic support center at the high school. There had been much discussion on the high school administrations part on how best to go about doing interventions for the typical kid. You know, in the elementaries, it's done in the individual classroom with teachers, you know, and then their progress monitored in terms of the skills the kids are trying to needing to master, et cetera. But in the high school, when you have a teacher who has conceivably have 100 students, it's like, how do you do those kinds of interventions consistently? And the high schools, I think my memory is correct in this, Mr. Thompson, you actually did some research in terms of how some other schools really addressed this kind of thing and came up with the idea of establishing an academic center which would be have in it teachers full-time who are English and math certified, you know, a math person, English person, et cetera, so that kids could go in and actually receive support and teachers could recommend in their classroom, so-and-so, I'm going to assign you to the academic center because you really need some skill development in such an area. So that center, so we're only one half-year into it, but it is, it's, it's, there are, it's staffed all day long. In law, there's, it's located in a large room and kind of divided in half where the math is on one side and the English is on the other side, whereas foreign have the space to be able to create two centers, one math, one English. So it's, I provided some data for you in the exhibit that's attached in terms of the number of students that have accessed it and also, you know, what the percent that represents. It looks like what's wrong with law because they only had 690 visits, but as Mr. Thompson explained to me, if a student is in the center for math and then goes for English help, they only count it as one, whereas in foreign, the kids are literally in two different spaces. So that's why the numbers look that way. But there's some parent testimony there. There's some academic specialists, the teachers who are actually leading the centers. And I received more comments today from some teachers. So there's comments from both foreign and law. And then there's also some student quotes, but I don't want to steal Mr. Thompson's thunder, so I'm going to turn it over to you. If you wouldn't mind, just to briefly talk about the benefits would be really helpful.
Sure. And thank you, Dr. Pizer. And good evening everyone. It is without a doubt in my five years in Norfolk, the most significant intervention, successful intervention that we've had for kids. The support center is, so far has seen a quarter of our student body at one point or another has visited it. And it is not a class. It is not accredited class. So you're not going there to take a math class. Rather, you would go there because you were weak in a particular skill set or an area that your math class was working on. And as you know, in math, if you struggle in one area, it's only going to get worse down the road. So a teacher will recommend a student who might be weak in a particular area, connect with their colleague who is working at the support center, and that's a finite period of time. So that student may be in there for two weeks. They can drop in at any time, and they do. What we have found is it's not just the kids who are in there for a short span of time, but I have kids from AP classes going in and asking the teachers, hey, could you read my draft? Can you help me with this work on, I'm really struggling with this thesis or this topic sentence or this supporting concept in the body of the paragraph? And so it really kind of morphed into almost like a college support center, you know, where kids can drop in as well. So it is all eight periods of the day. It is staffed by, at law, in one room with the two teaching areas, math teacher and an English teacher all day. And I have students now going in who might be struggling, especially this time of year now that we're halfway through, in chemistry because they're weak in a math skill or in a social studies class because they're really not getting a certain writing skill set needed in terms of getting that DBQ or that FRQ, that writing response question. So it's been, it's been a wonderful, wonderful program for the kids. And what I have been so grateful for is I took a risk. I took three out of the four teachers. So we have eight periods in a day. So teachers teach five classes. So I have two teachers teaching four classes in that center. Three of those four teachers, their fifth class is an AP class. So I took teachers who are, you know, my top-shelf teachers, and I made that commitment. And it has significantly paid off because when I have a teacher make a referral, it's a face-to-face conversation with a colleague who has, if it's a sophomore English class, that we see, that support center teacher has taught that particular class before. So there's a understanding of the work that's being done in math, the concept that's being done, the book, the curriculum, the pacing guides, where they need to be. So that's been, that's been an incredible collaborative opportunity which I think has benefited the students tremendously, as I think the statistics reflect. And, you know, now that we're ending the next quarter, you know, we feel like it's going to just continue.
I think that one of the quotes here, I don't know which teacher it was, but, you know, who said, "I'm able to view teacher lessons and assessments that continue to inform how I create and modify my assignments for what I teach." So the dialogue that is occurring between regular classroom teachers and then the teachers who are in the academic support center gives enormous strength. And then there's that kind of through line. It's not like kids are, you know, working on something independent of the class in which they're actually, you know, supposed to be doing the work. And that's just going to continue to grow because the more teachers start to talk about the benefits of having sent a student down for so many weeks or kids themselves talking, which again, you have a couple of quotations here. I mean, we could have gotten more. You know, the more, we know that it's just going to grow and grow, and that's precisely what we want to see. I will say, and this is not to say that this is why this makes it good, but I can remember myself, when I was, when I worked in New Canaan, the high school staff developed a similar kind of thing. It was only literacy, but they started a center and kids could come in, but also teachers could assign. And by the second year, it had taken off so strongly, and it was, it was classroom teachers who bought into the whole concept and so saw it as a tremendous opportunity to say that, you know, as a teacher, Jeff, you know, you really need to get some support. I'm going to have you, I'm going to tell Mrs. so-and-so in the center that I want, that you need to work on such and such and such. And so, you know, and then, and then to be able for the student to be able to come back into the classroom and the teacher, classroom teacher then is seeing, you know, the benefits there. And you even provided, you, I know, foreign collected some data around that in terms of from, to hear from teachers, have kids benefited from it.
We have, our staff, our support center staff, one of the teachers is a big data guy. Thank God. So he took a look at the grades of the students when they were referred and the end of their quarter grades to see what the, if there was an improvement. And for math, 63% of the students who visited the center or were referred to the center, their grades improved from when they were first referred, which is huge because when you think about that, especially in math, it's that skill building that's so essential. 92% of the kids who came down for English, 80% for social studies, and 73% for science, which again, is a lot about, usually if it's chemistry or biology, it's, there's a math weakness there that they need to work on. So the results have been really, not just anecdotally what you have, but also the data that reflects, these are kids who may be on the fence in the difference between a D and a C, a B and a C, an A and a B, you know, it's everybody. And for me, right, right out of the chute from, my biggest worry was this is going to become stigma because I've seen that happen. Oh, you're in that center. Oh, you're that kid. That's how it sounds to my head. And so when I started to see, because of the teachers and their reputation and their commitment to the center, all of a sudden, these AP kids coming down, these honors kids coming down, they're, it's now become, those kids, oh yeah, I had, I had biology last year. When I'm done here, let me help you out. I mean, it is, it's a completely, there's no stigma to it. I see, I see the, wow, I see the valedictorian here or the top of my class here, and I'm here. And so there's none of that, which is, makes it a lot safer for kids and a lot more conducive to getting, getting the work done.
I don't know if people have questions.
Questions on that, Ms. Federico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there time available on the center before school and after school as well? Just during the school day? Okay.
This is not a replacement of a class, Ms. Federico. This is a, if there's a study hall or if it's, a lot of kids drop in on their lunch period, that kind of thing. So it's in addition to. So for the kid who has a really booked schedule, just like they would see at any of their teachers before or after school, you know, the center staff is there as well.
Okay.
Yep.
Other questions? Great, okay.
So the only other thing that I would say, if Max Berkowitz were here from foreign, he would be echoing the same thing because that's, you know, he provided data, I happened to see him this afternoon at the Unified Sports Tournament that was, took place over at foreign, and he said, "I'm so sorry, I can't be there." But, you know, his teachers and his, the students are just as excited as well as the staff itself. So, okay. So then with respect to new questions, the first one, this is, the first two actually have to do with the language labs. And we have Dr. Barbero here, who is the supervisor of social studies, as well as Ms. Dr. Cavanna, who's the principal of West Shore, because I know you had questions about the furniture at West Shore. None other than a bit better for a principal to respond to that. But, you know, how will the language lab be monitored for fidelity and what will the process be? So actually, Dr. Barbero, would you want to speak to that?
Sure. I'm not sure I understand what the fidelity means. If it means how well, how often will it be used, are the one at West Shore and Law and Foreign are used all the time? In fact, what I hear from teachers is, I wish I could get in there more. So it's used all the time. We thought at law, we would start with a sign-in sheet, and then it would just fill every week, every, completely filled, and it's used all the time. If fidelity implies somehow checking how the kids are doing, we assess the students all the time. We have district common assessments three times, three times a year. They're monitored by their grades and power school and other things like that. So what we found anecdotally is the students and the teachers both report to us how, how fluid the learning is, how much fun it is. Again, as Dr. Pizer said the other night, you can do different tasks at the same time. And basically, if I was to have a conversation with each of you for, even for 30 seconds to a minute, imagine how much time it would take. In the lab, all of you would be talking at the same time ahead of recording. So the kids have much more time on task with their work in that lab setting than if we were holding in a traditional whole-class setting.
Does that clarify the question for, maybe, had you asked the question? I'm not sure who asked the question last night. Have it clarified? Okay, great. Thank you.
And the other is the question of the quality of the furniture in the lab at West Shore. I have to tell you, Mr. Cavanna, there was some concern that you might get dumped on, so. Which is the problem with the question.
That's a good thing.
Yes, I appreciate the support. The lab is in good shape. Really, just some chairs would be nice. The desks are, you know, perfectly accountable. What's really nice about the room that we have is that the computer lab, the computers kind of allow on the perimeter of the room, and then we have teaching space in the middle. So the teacher could actually, you know, present a less specific lesson and work on a specific project, release the kids to go to the computer section of the lab, have them participate in a different activity, and then bring them back together in the teaching section as well. So, you know, to echo a couple of things that Dr. Barbero said, it's very important when you're looking at world language is, is having the opportunity for the, for the students to be emerged in the, in the language, in the target language that's being taught. And when you have 25 kids in a class, 20 kids in a class or a larger class, that could be rather loud, which is, which is a good thing, but also what the language lab allows you to do is with the use of the headphones, they can have these conversations, you know, right next, someone right next to them and/or someone across the room from them, and allows them to kind of stay focused on the conversation that's happening. The other piece, I just made a couple of notes that I thought was really important, is because you can play back text. So say it's an audio piece that the kids are listening to. Kids learn at a lot of different levels, and to be able to play the text, replay the text again, some students might have a more complicated audio piece, you know, some students will listen to the way that actually they're pronouncing the words themselves. So this language lab really affords them that opportunity, and I think it's really powerful.
But you'd like new chairs.
New chairs, yes. But we're doing well with the chairs.
Ms. Bonner?
Yes. My daughter goes to West Shore, and she participates in Spanish at West Shore and loves the language lab. And when she uses it, she comes home and tells me how much fun it is because they can talk, the teacher can listen in, and the teacher can talk to them from her desk, and she thinks it's great. And I've seen a very big enthusiasm from her when, for being able to use that, so.
I can remember a language lab when I was in high school, but it was the head. So this is a little bit more state-of-the-art, isn't it? That's, that's good to hear. So maybe we can work on the chairs.
She has improvement.
Okay.
So question 52 actually is a reference to the original question 12, which was at the end of the school year, there has always been a budget surplus that has either returned to the city or earmarked for spending. You know, could we provide, you know, the amounts, which we did, but there was clarification that was asked for around where the money actually went. And we have Mr. Richatelli back with us this evening, so he's going to address this question.
Thanks, Dr. Pizer. And just because I wasn't here, don't think I was going to watch for you. So clearly off the discussion last night, to clarify what was in question number 12, when we anticipate that there's going to be a surplus at the end of the year, we come to the board in May with a detailed memo of those projects that, if there's money left over, these are the projects that we would like to do. These are the projects that are needed, and these are the projects that that money would be used for. And so at the, at the end of the year, when we finalize the budget and when you actually do the transfers in June and July, then we actually do those projects. And so what I can tell you is that the money that's designated, or the money that is surplus is designated for those projects that are on those lists. And so from the 14-15 budget year, I can, I gave you a list of the projects that were undertaken with the surplus from 14-15 year. You can see it. There's, there's some as, you know, as small as painting the kitchen at Foreign High School, which was probably a $2,000 project, to the Meadowside Traffic Flow Project where the city contributed $500,000 in the capital improvement plan, but we supplemented that with, between the parking lot improvements, the lighting improvements, and curbing, yeah, there was one other at Meadowside. Oh, the cubby replacements at Meadowside, which was unrelated to, but we spent probably over $300,000 at Meadowside as part of that surplus. So I think your question was, what does that money go for? And it goes for those projects that are designated on that May memo. And this was a list of just the ones that we did in 14-15.
Questions on that? Any clarifications needed?
The question was asked, can we use surplus dollars in a non-lapsing account to fund anticipated retirements?
Yep. And the simple answer is, the legislature allows it, but your policy does not. So just to back up a little bit and go over the verbiage that I put in the answer, Connecticut General Statute 10-248A allows up to 1% of the operating budget to be designated by the board or to be requested by the board to be put into a non-lapsing city fund. The board has to vote to, to ask the Board of Finance of the city to designate that fund, and then if the Board of Finance agrees, the money is deposited. And then the legislature does not put any, doesn't put any, doesn't restrict how the monies can be spent. And so the simple answer is, yes, you could, according to the legislation. However, in 2012, when the Board of Education voted to request that the Board of Finance set the first one up, the Board of Finance had many questions and some reservations. And the designation that the board did at that time was, they would put $450,000 into a fund to pay for the very future resurfacing of the two athletic fields at Foreign and Law, which was going to be over a million-dollar project. And the board thought it would be prudent if there was reserve, or if there was surplus money, to put that toward, to offset the bond when the city would have to come up with the money to do it. So the board, Board of Ed, went to the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance had reservations and indicated really that they were skeptical is not the right word, but they were apprehensive to go forward with this because they didn't want this to become an extension of the operating budget. And so they really made it clear that they wanted the monies, if they were going to do this, this, that time and in the future, that they wanted a designated reason for the money, and they wanted to be sure that the board was going to honor that designation. And so based upon that, the Board of Education adopted a policy which I've included in your package, it's policy P3171, which states, "The Board of Education may designate these funds for a specific purpose with emphasis on needs as identified in the five-year capital improvement plan, but not otherwise funded in the CMT. The board will expend these funds for such, for such previously specified designated purpose, except they may also be used for other extraordinary or emergency expenditures which may be yet necessary, yet otherwise not budgeted for." And so, you know, according to your policy, you wouldn't be able to just say, we're going to use it for an operating expense like the funding anticipated retirement. So you would have to change your policy in order to do that.
Jacob Duski?
Jim, do you think there would be an advantage to doing that? My concern was the size of the surplus some years. And, you know, would there be, would it make sense for us to revisit that issue and set up a surplus to cover retirement benefits and potentially special ed tuition? Because those seem to be the two most volatile categories that we have.
But what I think is, it's, it's been the opposite, not being able to fund them, it's been that we've had too much money.
Right.
And the reason, the reason, especially in last year's anomaly year, was, there was in 14, in 13-14, we had the 28 retirements, and then in 14-15, we had only eight retirements. So we had the opposite effect of each of them. In the 15-6, in the 14-15 year, we weren't recognizing, or we were recognizing a tremendous amount of turnover savings because we had that many more new teachers than we normally would have. And on the same token, that year when we, that same year when we only had eight retirements, we paid out less retirement money than we normally would be budgeting for. So it was a double whammy. It was a double effect, something that I don't anticipate is going to happen again. As I say, we budget for the 18 because that 18 number is where it's been for a long time as far as the number of retirements per year. And again, if you take the 28 one year and the 8 the next year, you're right at the 18 for the two-year average. So it was, you know, I want to say it was an anomaly that year. I think normally, we anticipate pretty well what we're going to need for retirements, and we anticipate pretty well what that turnover savings is going to be based on budgeting for that average.
Right. The reason why I had looked at it is, I was, put myself in the position of an alderman who might be looking for budget cuts. And, you know, seeing a large surplus at the end of the year can be a justification for cutting the budget. Do you think that's a realistic concern or?
Well, I'd always be concerned, you know, if they don't understand it. And that's our, that's our responsibility when we go before them to make sure that that's a question, that they understand the reasons why. You know, it's, it's, we budget for what, what we believe that we're going to need. And we, and we base it on the best information that we have, you know, nine months before the fiscal year's going to start, and then another 12 months before it ends. So there's a long stretch of time where many different things can, can happen. Normally, you know, there's, you need to end on some kind of a surplus. And as we also explained, a lot of those, a lot of the buildings and grounds projects that get done each summer are not, they're not frivolous things that, they're things that are on our priority list, but they're just not high enough on the priority list to make it into budget. And so there's no, there really is no other way to fund those projects, and they wouldn't get done. The Meadowside project would not have gotten done this summer if we didn't have that surplus money. You know, I look back in the list from earlier years, same thing at John F. Kennedy School. The driveway improvements that were done at JFK were done partially with city money So, I understand your concern, I certainly do, but we just have to make sure that they're educated properly.
Okay.
Any other questions on this?
The next question has to do with the impact, which I think you've addressed this a little bit, and may want to say more, of this year's budget due to fewer retirements. So, the example of 2014 and 2015.
Right, I think I pretty much just answered that. It's, it was one year where we had too many, one, the next year where we had too little, which affected the turnover savings one year, and affected the retirement savings the next year. So, this year, we expect that we will have the average, and already we've had, I think about eight retirements, or six. We've got six retirements already this year, maybe eight.
Six so far.
Six so far, which is where we would normally have. We anticipate that this will be a normal average eighteen retirement year, so we don't think that we're going to have the large surplus that we did from last year.
Fifty-five, is it possible to list all the pre-K programs on one sheet? And they are listed in Exhibit 10. Mr. Bird, do you want to just talk about the distinction among the three programs?
Sure, currently, we have, as you can see from the exhibit, we have two programs. The first one, draw your attention to, is a special education preschool. This is a full school day, and it follows a school calendar program, although some students with identified needs do receive extended year services into the summer. There is a combination of ages, three, four, and five-year-olds, and it does have a tuition-based fee structure for it, it's a sliding scale. You can see our current enrollment is 161, and it's broken out by school there. Again, remember that that's various age groups, that just isn't all of our students that would rise to kindergarten next year. Our second program is the-
Can I interrupt for a second, just as a clarification? It's a full-day program in the sense of that it operates all day, but quite honestly, there are a number of students that might be going only two days a week, or they may only go mornings, because remember, we're working with three-year-olds, four-year-olds, five-year-olds, and so that's really contingent upon parents and the wishes of parents. We obviously would like to have our children here more, but there are parents that, you know, will say, "No, two days a week is sufficient," et cetera. So, teachers are literally servicing kids all day long, but they may be serving, servicing different groups of kids on different days. Just wanted to clarify that.
And I also wanted to add, too, that this number will continue to grow as the school year continues, because as students turn three years old, and if they're identified special ed student, we have to offer a program right at that point. So, if their birthday is next week and they're turning three, at that point, we have to offer a pre-K program for them.
Yes, Mr. Jacob Zinski?
Is there any special process for integrating the new students into a school year that's already started?
It happens on an ongoing basis throughout the year. We have students joining the program at any point, and we do what's called a dial screening for the students to identify any areas of concern.
Right.
And then if they're identified as special ed, if we're having a PPT, developing an IUP, each of our programs, except for the program for students with autism, is an integrated program. And so, we try to look at, a third of the students as identified special ed students, a third at risk, and a third typical. And so, each of our programs have pretty close to that balance.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Whiskeman?
You say, "Offer," I presume then the parents have the option of choosing to have their child serviced in some other way. I mean, if they wish, they don't have to come into our program.
Correct, they do have that choice.
They could refuse any immediate service, although I would think that might trigger some other interventions if there was some kind of a problem, if the parent wasn't willing to provide any kind of service for their child. But nonetheless, that's just an offering right now.
Correct.
And most, I would presume, take it, but there may be some who opt for other services, private or otherwise.
Correct. Most do choose to take advantage of it, but there are some families that choose not to.
And the other program is the Ready to Learn program. This is a full-day, full-year program. It is provide before and after-school care, as well as during summer school, I'm sorry, during the summer months and school vacations. So, more of a traditional type of program, rather than a school program. Services three- and four-year-olds. It also has a sliding scale tuition, and our current enrollment is essentially, it's four sections, and you can see there's two at Orange Avenue, one at Live Oaks, and one at Pumpkin, servicing currently 64 students, and that does change from what I understand. I'm not an expert in this area, so I don't know if anybody wants to add anything to that.
The Ready to Learn was originally funded through a grant, through the state, and actually, you know, real tribute should be paid to Peggy Kelly, who was responsible for bringing Ready to Learn into the district, I don't know how many years ago, long before my time. And she has been extremely successful in continuing to get grant monies. So, when I first came into the district five years ago, almost at this point, there was one Ready to Learn classroom, I believe, and now we're at four. And much of that is grant-funded. The state, the state feels very good about the work that's taking place, and the Ready to Learn program is considered a model program for Ready to Learn. That's the grant, it's tied to Ready to Learn. So, it's, it's just a good program, and the demand on the part of parents who want to have their children in the program is huge. There's just a waiting list that's been in existence for years, of children wanting to get into the program.
And I believe that even though these programs are at these schools, it doesn't necessarily mean those students are from those districts.
Correct, that's correct.
Mr. Jacob Zinski?
Is this program different than what is offered by the Y?
Well, this is a, this is a pre-K.
Okay.
Full-day program.
Okay.
So, it's an educational program.
And the Y part is before after school? Okay.
Correct. Yeah, this is, these kids are literally, they're in classroom all day long.
Right.
There's a certified teacher, and then there's, you know, usually a pair of professionals that are there as well. So, this is, right, it's a, it's an educational program.
Right, okay.
And then, as we discussed last evening, we did talk about our proposed Pumpkin Delight Pre-K, specifically servicing Pumpkin Delight students. It would be half-day, and would follow the school calendar, and we would primarily service four- and five-year-olds that are anticipating becoming kindergarteners the following year. We will focus, as we talked about last night, on both academic and social skills, in order for them to be ready for kindergarten. And as we discussed, it is a sliding scale tuition, and with the two sections, we believe we could enroll between 34 and 36 students.
Mr. Whiskeman?
Does this proposal also include before and after-school care, or is not included before or after? It's strictly school day?
Correct.
Thank you.
It's a half-day, though, for each class, it's just half-day.
But there's a morning, half-
A morning and an afternoon, plus, yeah. What if, what if you don't have interest from 34 to 36 students in the Pumpkin Delight area? What would you do?
We have discussed that possibility, and then we would open it up to other areas as well.
Any other questions on this?
I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Federico?
Thank you. So, just to clarify, is this only going to be offered to the Pumpkin Delight School District, to start with?
Yes.
Okay.
Fifty-six, what's the typical cost of a classroom library book at the elementary level? And again, this is related to the question that had been raised about the out-of-print book. So, do you want to speak to that?
In looking at the K5 book lists from this past year, you know, we did have very extensive book lists that are updated on a regular basis, and we do have our ELA supervisor, Ms. Nall, here with us that could speak to it if necessary. But I did take a look in detail at grade-two book lists, and looking over the 300 fiction and nonfiction books on the approved second-grade list, only five books were priced over $8. For the most part, the average price for all 300 was somewhere in the range of $6. So, the total amount to fund a second-grade classroom for these 300 books is approximately $1,900. And as you can see, the note there is rare for us to have to do this. We haven't been adding many sections recently. Typically, with declining enrollment, we would close sections, but due to the reconfiguration, we did have to add a number of sections at the different grade levels. Which actually brings me into the next section. The next question is about recommended kindergarten books. If you turn to Exhibit 11, you'll see a cover sheet there, which lists out the different vendors and the book collections for kindergarten. When this was printed out by Deb Dubian, it was close to 35 pages. So, rather than providing you with all 35 pages, I chose one. It's the second one, it's the Bank Street informational books. Again, these are nonfiction books, and you can see through the list there. And as being a school system and working with vendors, and Ms. Dubian does an excellent job with us, we get the list price, and then what seems to be the extended price, that's the actual price we can, we pay, which is, which is a discounted price. So, for this class set, if you turn to the last page, the entire class set is $1,500, I'm sorry, $1,058, that includes the shipping. And the vendor does a nice thing, is they label boxes for us by teacher. So, when they're shipped to us in the summer, we can just put those books in the teacher's classroom, we don't have to sit through them here or at the school. So, we do pay a little bit extra for that, but it is a significant benefit to us, specifically this summer, it was incredibly beneficial to those. But again, looking through the list there, you can page through it, you can guess the average price on these is somewhere around $4 to $5, with the most significant cost on this one is in the $6 range.
A lot better than $160, $50.
You know, I do feel bad for Port Perky, but, you know, we're not paying him $160, $6 bucks, so.
He is dead, by the way.
I know, I know. Oh, you really did. We'll alert next time. People are watching it, I'm sure.
On that note, 58 was also to revisit the question 28 from before, which had to do with the board having to pay $60,000 for the generator. So, Mr. Richatelli can talk in more detail about that.
Sure. So, as I put in the previous question, question number 28, the city's Department of Emergency Management applied for a state grant for a new generator at Jonathan Law. Jonathan Law, as you know, is the primary shelter for the city in the event of an emergency, and is in need of an upgraded generator. So, they applied for the grant, they received the grant. It's a reimbursable grant, which means that the city has to put the money up front, and then receives back 75% of it, and the local share is 25%. And so, the approximate 25% is $60,000, and the city requested that we pay for that local share of it through the Board of Education budget. And the reason that they did was because it certainly is, certainly is needed for the shelter, but it's going to be used by the shelter very, it's very good that it's only used by the shelter for a very few number of times. And then the other times, the school will benefit. And so, I listed some of the potential benefits of the upgraded generator, and so we can just go through them. More areas of the school will be able to be powered by this generator, including the cafeteria, the gymnasium, the locker room areas, the auditorium, and the media centers. Right now, the generator really just powers sporadic emergency lighting throughout the school, and the kitchen and cafeteria, and only limited at that point. So, what this will allow is, if we do have a power outage, we can hold students in those common areas. Like, just a couple of days ago, we had a power outage at Harperside, and it worked, it worked out fine, because the power came back on, but students were already on their way into school, and so we were going to have to house those students in the gymnasium or the cafeteria where there was natural light, but then we were going to have to bus those students to a different school until the power came back on. In this particular case, we would be able to house the entire student body of law in these common areas until power came back on, or until school was released. So, it gives us that capability. The kitchen and the cafeteria remain fully functional, and you might say that if we have a power outage, the kids are going to go home anyway. But in the event, and it has happened, where other schools have power, and Law, for whatever reason, did not, the kitchen, Jonathan Law Kitchen is the central kitchen for the district. And so, if we had to, we could continue to cook and prepare food and ship it to other schools as needed, or we also could, it also can be used to ship to, well, that's the main reason to go. The kitchen can continue, and other schools can still have their food. The new generator will allow life safety features that are in the school, like the fire alarm suppression system, the security systems, and the access control systems to remain fully functional. So, if there are still students in the school until release, all those security features stay on. And the fire alarm system, often when we lose power, the fire alarm system will also have to be reset, which is a costly thing to have to do. And then, lastly, in the case of a winter power outage, the new general, new generator will allow water to continue to be pumped through the pipes, which could prevent freezing of the pipes and flooding to occur. So, those are some of the reasons that the city presented to us, as to why they thought that the board should fund it, rather than the city. We will have the benefit of that generator, there's no cost, I mean, there's no question about it. And the bottom line on it, and I know that sometimes we don't think this way, but it's one pocket or the other, it's all coming out of the taxpayers' dollars. And in this particular case, the city made the request that we share the cost of this, and so we're presenting it to you in the budget.
Questions or comments on that? Mr. Whiskeman?
Is this a proposal, or have we already acquired the generator?
It's already, well, it's not required.
I mean, we haven't-
Acquired.
Acquired.
No, it's not acquired yet, no.
Oh, okay.
And the city has actually already put the money up front, and, but has not gone out to bid for it or anything.
Oh, okay.
We're still waiting for that.
All right.
Mr. Krzyszczynski?
So, basically, the city's putting up the money, but they're getting it back, so the city is paying nothing, Board of Ed pays $60,000 in the end.
Yes.
Okay.
The Board of Ed is going to pay the city back, the money that the city gave us in the budget. That's another, you know, it's another way of looking at it, yes.
I realize it all comes out of our pockets, anyway.
Yeah.
The taxpayers, either way, but-
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, go on.
On the maintenance of it, does the city do it, or are we doing a subcontractor that
does the maintenance routinely?
That's a good question. I'm assuming that we would put it under our normal maintenance, but I can check on that.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because last night, they said that we pay for, because generators automatically start up usually like once a week, just to maintain, and we pay for the fuel for that, and I was just wondering last night, like, who pays for the maintenance on that? Because that has to be periodically done also.
Sure.
I was just wondering, did the town supply from theirs, or, you know, did we sub it out, and we're paying for the whole thing?
Yeah, well, it isn't, the one that we have at Law right now, we service that, and we manage it. So, I'm assuming that we're going to-
Do the same thing.
-be responsible for that one, but we'll certainly check on it for you.
Mr. Federico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, a way to look at it, look at this might be, it's our generator, and the city was kind enough to go out and get this grant money to pay for 75% of it.
Yes, that's another way of looking at it. The bottom line on it is, is, it's, you know, it is going to benefit the city in an emergency situation. We've had some pretty big natural disasters, and we need sheltering, and the current generating system that's there is not adequate. So, there was state grant money available, so the other way we can look at it is that we're getting a $225,000 generator for $60,000.
Thank you. Comments? Is that it?
225 or 240?
I didn't do the exact math. I'm not sure of the exact amount, but our share is, it's 57 and change.
And the next question has to do with the gasoline contract. So, which is a reference to Question 36.
Sure. So, the term of the contract that we're working under right now is, it's the city's contract, of course, but it was December 1st, 2014, through December 30th of 2015. However, there is a minimum commitment that the city had to commit to as part of that contract. In talking to the purchasing agent, we will, the city will fulfill its commitment for those, or will deplete the number of gallons from that commitment in March, and that's when he intends to go out and bid again. So, as I pointed out in the previous question, yes, right now, we're paying higher than the market price, but there were many months of that term where we were paying less than less than the price. And that's, that's kind of the, that's the, a little bit of the risk that you take when you, when you lock in to one of these contracts. But we anticipate in March that we're going to get a tremendous price, and then hopefully we're going to make out on that one even more, so. And if you, if you look at, since we went to this new system for some of the new board members, before we were, before Durham would purchase fuel at the retail pumps, and then they would pay for the first dollar and then bill us for the rest of it, we had to pay for all of that, and it was, we were paying much higher prices. So the new system that we have is, in the new contract that we negotiated with Durham, we made a term of that contract that they had to get a dispensing tank on their property at their expense. And then we purchase the fuel from the city at the city's locked-in bid price minus all the taxes that go with it. And, and the arrangement has been, we've had tremendous savings, and you can see that in the budget, the amount of money that we've been, been able to reduce in gasoline, not only because the prices have come down, because there was times when the prices were up still in that, in that period, but because we're buying it in the locked-in wholesale price as opposed to the retail pump price.
And they still pay the dollar?
They do. Yes. Yep. And then, and then-
Number sixty?
Yeah, the last, the last part of the question is, you know, we can't, we can't break the contract. We're locked into it. We have to sign the contract for, that we would purchase from that vendor for the term of the contract.
That was the last question, right? Yeah, we did before. Are there any, anybody have any follow-up questions at this point? You want to ask? Is there anybody here that wants to address the board for public comment? I see just staff members out there, so I will not read the public comment statements since I don't believe there's any notes in the public here. All right, so then this is, this was the final budget workshop. We have a meeting on Wednesday, the twentieth, at seven PM, which will, typically, the way we formulate the agenda, there's public comment first, and, you know, we can leave a space for any final budget questions. If anybody has any additional questions over the weekend that come up that they need clarified or anything they want to clarify at all, send them along, or even if there's any questions that night. But then we move into our vote, and once we've cleared up all the questions. So typically, our practice has been that a motion would be made to approve the superintendent's budget as presented with a second, and then it's open for discussion, and any board member is free to offer any amendments that they feel is appropriate to the budget. So just from a parliamentary, parliamentary perspective, you know, if an amendment is made, it must be seconded. Then there's discussion, just like a regular main motion, and then it can get complicated, so you kind of have to be alert, because you have to vote on the amendment, and if it passes, that modifies the main motion, and then you go back to, you know, discussing the main motion as amended. If it fails, then you stay with whatever your original main motion was, and you just keep going until there's no more. When we're ready to vote on the final, take our final vote, it's on the main motion, whether it's the main motion as presented or as modified by an amendment. So that's been our, our practice.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just for clarification, if an amendment is not seconded, then there is no discussion?
Correct. That's correct. It has to be seconded, and amendment has to be seconded in order to move into discussion. If it's not seconded, it's just, goes away.
Okay.
So are there any questions about that? Not about that. Can we make sure there's no questions about that specifically first? Any questions on that process? Okay. Yes, Dr. Gray.
I was just wondering if Mr. Richitelli could get us the actual figures on the commitment for the twenty-five percent versus the round number.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there's no, if there are no questions on the process and there's no further questions on the budget, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we're finished.